For Perry City Council for October 5th, 2020 to order. We have a course. Item three on our agenda this evening is items for review and discussion. Item three A is appearance, uh, appearances is. Item three A one is a discussion of property at two oh three South Street, located in the land bank. Mr. Adalot is not here at this time. Thank you. Item three B, our department is Department of Administration. Three D one is budget software. While Ms. King's coming up, we do have technical problems this evening and I don't anticipate that we're going to have any type of video or slides for these presentations. So if you will, council members, if you will just look at your board pack, they should be in there. Okay, Ms. King, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor and Council, you recall during our budget hearings, we did, did mention that we should continue to take a look at our, our software to force to increase efficiency. Uh, Mr. Gilmore, Robert and I have reviewed, uh, budget software that we believe would be very helpful in our annual budget process. Currently, we use Incode Financials. There's a piece for our budget that we use, but it is very limited. And transferring, importing and exporting data to and from, um, uh, back into Incode and into Excel spreadsheets is time consuming. Uh, it's time consuming to formulate the spreadsheet, format spreadsheets, then get the documentation into the request that we want to minimize to the departments in order for them to submit their request. Um, and looking at this software, we look at, uh, which is Questica Budget, we did recognize that this is the leader in budget, uh, preparation and management software. Currently, this is of channeling. Donna Woody and Alvarado are using this, um, Questica Budget. Um, it provides an easy to use web-based interface to allow budget input, as we said, so the departments can enter, can directly input into the software and we won't have to transfer, uh, spreadsheets back and forth. They can key it directly into it and when the, um, budget management, Mr. Gilmore, Robert or whoever is doing this time can, can go in and insert that information again. It's not a transfer of data back and forth. Um, there are four primary modules with the Questica Budget that they offer, which is operating, uh, salary position training, I mean, planning capital and, uh, planning performance. Those are the four major, um, modules. They also have a transparency module that we do feel that would be very beneficial for us. As we said before, it integrates with power technologies and Coversion nine systems, which we use. Um, they have distinctive ledgers and funding analysis that we can do analysis of any type of situation and scenarios that we desire. Uh, they're easily actionable and where, within the software, we can export it into an Excel spreadsheet where we can continue to manipulate it any other way that we desire. Um, this is, it builds, I think it'll help us build trust by being transparent and accountable. Um, we can showcase financial and non-financial data through interactive charts, graphs, and, uh, graphics, text that could be shared across all the social channels as well as via access to the web and our mobile devices. And it can engage citizens and council staff and with others in the community, um, for better conversations and explanations and of our programs and services. I had a couple of slides left for you to review, but can't see those. But, um, the reports, as I said, it would be very easy to, uh, export and import into Excel for easy manipulation. We can track the progress of, uh, and measures of our government's strategic plans and goals. And most of all, we, um, the software is discounted, uh, through the end of the year. So they reached out to us after they had given us a proposal earlier. So we have, uh, attached in your board pack is a proposal for a three-year agreement, uh, which will be the first year cost of discounted by fifty percent. Uh, if we chose the seven-year agreement, then the first year cost would be nine thousand seven, nine thousand five hundred dollars. So that's why we're bringing it to you now because of the, um, cost savings that we could, um, receive if we act upon it before the end of the year, as well as give us the opportunity to, um, get it configured and set up and ready for the 2022 budget year that we'll be coming up on, um, in a few months. So our recommendation is that you, uh, approve for us to proceed and depending on the contract that we, um, select, and we were, since they presented the three-year, we were anticipating that one, but of course it would have to be reviewed by the city attorney before we can, um, move forward and do any more. Any questions?
Councilmember, what questions do you have, relative to this recommendation relative to the new software for our accounting system?
This would just be the budget portion, not the entire accounting system.
All right. I have one question. Uh, is that going to make everything more efficient, as we tell the right?
Yes, it would definitely help, uh, because in importing the data into Excel for the, to do the budget request, it takes a lot of time. I can give the form, I can give this report, but then when it's dumped into Excel, it's, it's not, it's not, you got a whole lot of cleanup that we'll have to do to get it in those formats and for the departments to...
So what you're saying is that you're going to relay it back to Gilmore, you're going to relay it back to you, that's how you're going to be able to do that? I say when you're joining, you know, I know you mentioned earlier about, uh, would he be able to see?
Yes, yes, he'll be able to see exactly what the departments put in, which he does now. But it will be faster.
Right.
Because once we cut it off and say the departments, you finish with what you're doing, then he could have, you'd have access to it, um, as to what they've done, and then he can key in his portion as to whether he recommends or does not recommend, and it's side by side. And when it goes back out to the departments, it would, um, there might be some tweaking that we have to do with saving versions of the, of the, of the document, but it won't be that. Once it comes back, I get the information from Mr. Gilmore, I dump it in, and then we got to reformat and get back into that particular, uh, format that we work for the departments, so they can see what their requests were.
I like it. I really like it.
It looks good and it sounds good.
Can you define the cost again for me? Is, is this a subscription fee of nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars good for all three years, or is that just the first year?
That's the first, the first year of the three-year agreement that you have, that the first year cost is the nineteen two fifty. Um, that's the first year cost. It includes the, of course, the implementation and, um, implementation and subscription cost. I think it's one of, the first year cost is normally like thirty-six thousand dollars.
So it, it's gonna, it'll cost us nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the first year?
Yes.
And then in the second year, it'll go to nineteen thousand five hundred?
Yes.
Okay. So they're just giving us a fifty, fifty percent discount for first year to kind of make it equal to what all of the, because of the installation cost?
Well, even if we, if we chose the, another one, the second year cost is nineteen five. So really, they were just giving a discount on the first year. The first year would normally be thirty-six thousand.
Questions, councilmembers, or to budgeting software? Something that you are willing to move forward with? Yes. Mr. Gilmore, will this need a vote tomorrow night?
Uh, not because of the uniqueness of this. If you concur, then we'll just proceed and set it up. I would recommend that we go with the three-year, so we're not locked in for a longer period of time in case there's some issue or we outgrow it or whatever it may be.
So we have concurrence, councilmembers, we go with three years of the costs that has been outlined by the speaker. We have two currents, Mr. Gilmore and Ms. King. Thank you very much for bringing that forward.
Thank you so much.
Move forward to the problem. Item three C is Department of Community Development. Three C one is a discussion of the Woodlands-Wind River street connection.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Um, in your packet, you have a couple of drawings, um, marked up aerials that kind of show what we're talking about. Um, as currently developed, Wind River subdivision has a single means of access out of subdivision onto Highway one twenty-seven, and, um, so does the Woodlands subdivisions all have one simple means of access to, um, Highway one twenty-seven. Um, the, so that, and that's what one of those drawings shows you with red lines, you know, the access point out to, uh, Highway one twenty-seven. The connection, uh, that is, was approved between the two would provide for a second means of access should there be an accident or some other, um, event that would, that would cause a blockage, uh, to those routes out of the neighborhoods. Um, and then you also have in your packet, a, an aerial supply export that would be, would be approved to preliminary platte for Woodlands Phase two, Wind River Phase two, showing how the two connect, um, related to one another. I believe the manager has provided you with, um, recommendations regarding that connection. Now we have to answer any questions if we make that agreement.
Councilmembers, what questions do you have, right? I'll tell to Mr. Wood's presentation.
Mayor, I have a question on, uh, that maybe is for the city on the run. Uh, the recommendation on item two, speed table, it being installed on rolling Acres Drive and Riverton Drive on Grandview Avenue. Councilman Peterson, correct me if I'm wrong, is, in my understanding, it would be, I guess, more plugged in would be, uh, uh, residence, which is, so then we consider this speed table to possibly be installed on Riverton and not on rolling Acres? I just wanted to make sure I have that for consideration.
That's my understanding as well, that we would ask that, that storm table, I mean, race table be placed, um, on Riverton, not so much to slow the traffic that may be here because there really don't pay much traffic there, but to honestly to discourage traffic from being there. Rolling Acres has never asked for a speed rail on their road. I don't think that speed there is concerning there. So, um, I appreciate all the stop signs for them and they told them that the, um, race table can be moved to Riverton. I think we would, um, exhausted the patience of these kind of people who have, have, um, very kindly and very nicely asked for this.
Any other questions?
Uh, yes, that'd be fine. You know, certainly with your way of counsel feels that needs to go. Uh, I do think we'll have to watch, assuming you agree with the other recommendations with that, we'll also have to watch and check and see what traffic patterns wind up doing. Because you could have, uh, a shift in Woodlawn's subdivision, traffic going the other way to get, uh, through Wind River subdivision to get out to State Route one twenty-seven. But there's no way of knowing any of that, so I think just the one vice sign, Riverton Drive would be fine for right now.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions?
I didn't, we have, what do you, what do you spell here? I feel they wanted to say things, this depends on what they think or else.
No, they have comments, please, right now.
Uh, do you need to go?
Please. Just give us your name and address.
My name is Jeanne Apple, I'm going to the Oakwood Gate, Miss Drive, and I do want to make a correction. I, I don't know if I, or maybe I misunderstood, but Brian said something about there's only one access for Woodlands, and that's not true. Woodlands has multiple access, um, they're in the middle of finishing up Woodlands for Hardey, you're on the other one, but the subdivision that goes out to, um, Old Perry Way. So I just wanted, I didn't know if my mind misunderstood, no, because I wasn't here on the local end, so I just wanted to bring that to attention, that they do have multiple access.
But it's not functional at this time?
It's, it almost doesn't. I mean, it is very close, but they've got the, the, what do you call it, the street drainage, um, they have it all, like, too much, they're getting ready to lay the, uh, the crushed rock before they take it next where they're at right now.
Okay.
So it's very close to being done. So I wanted to bring that, but I had a speech, but I'm sure, I don't know if you guys have time to listen to it, I don't want to take up any more of your time, I just wanted to say that.
Okay.
But we, we would really appreciate any consideration to, to, that would deter the traffic, um, for Woodlands. And it'd be great, we appreciate if you all would, if you'd take that into consideration and keep our subdivision safe with less traffic. We really appreciate that.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time, though.
Thank you.
How about in my packet? It has been just an absolute pleasure to work with the people at Woodlands since they first brought this to our attention. Um, you know, their way of life at the end of the cul-de-sac was, um, pretty much taken away about ninety hours. Part of the cul-de-sac is actually going to be above the tree, but, um, you know, we haven't been able to, the concept code and all, we haven't been able to do everything exactly as they asked, but they have just been patient, and, you know, they've compromised, they've compromised enough. I thank you very much because you make it a pleasure to do this job and to try your services.
So, Mr. Gilmore, you needed concurrence from this group to move forward with the recommendations that are on the table, I understand that, so?
Yes.
Putting the stop signs on both streets and putting a traffic table or a speed table, if you will, over on Riverton Drive?
Right. Plus, plus the other adjustments.
Okay.
Talking about making Riverton one way when they open up another primary access to Woodland. In other words, all the recommendations in there.
Are you, council member, you agreeable with that?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Gilmore, if you would move forward with that, we would appreciate it. Thank you for being here this evening. I think we are going to, that will help a great deal in slowing your traffic down there, so.
Thank you so much.
Item three D is Department of Public Works. Three D one is the wait sign, wait sign, meaning sign, Ms. Fitz.
Thank you. So in your board pack, you have a proposal that outlines staff's recommendations for the next phase, which is actually Phase Three, installation of the trees wait finding signage. And as you'll see in the summary that's on the first page, this includes two monument type, um, signage installations at Heritage Oaks Park on Sandman Boulevard, and then the Perry Welcome Center on Fort Meade. And it as well includes six other locations, which will be a Type Three Destination Sign to, um, update some current signage installations at Public Works, on Cemetery and Hathaway Park, in A.D. Redmond Park, as well as add signage to some of our newer properties that currently don't have signage, which would be Community Development on Main Street and High Needle Park on Country Club Road. Um, just in general, to give you a reference point, the two monument signs will be very similar to those that are out here at the Art Center in front of City Hall and the Public Safety Building. And then the Destination Type Three is very similar to that, that, that our animal shelter location on Wall Street in Division. Um, in general, you have, uh, outlined what these signs will look like, but the monument signs are an aluminum panel that's about eight and a half feet by four and a half feet with, uh, brick veneer, and, um, they include a concrete footing rebar. The other Type, Type Three Destination Signs are aluminum panels, about, um, four and a half, five feet by six and a half feet, and there are posts that are embedded in a concrete footing. So they're a little bit smaller, but, um, as you see on the animal shelter, it's very visible and it's, um, good for those locations that we have there. So the total cost comes to be ninety-five thousand and ninety dollars. That includes the installations, other costs associated with the installation of these signs. So if you have any questions, I'll take some at this time, or if you have any revisions you'd like to see additions.
Councilmembers, questions?
Mayor, I was just wondering if, if, uh, Councilwoman Jones, who's upstairs, she doesn't get a monument installed, just makes a sign.
Wow. I, I, I know, so I'm very pleased with, uh, the way you're...
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Um, councilmembers, are you ready to move forward with this recommendation? Mr. Gilmore, we have currents, move forward with it. Thank you, Ms. Fitz. Look forward to going up. It really looked good off of the town. Item three D two is authorized bidding for the waste transfer station. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, in your board pack, you have the design layout and a recommendation from administration to proceed with Phase One, page of the transfer station. Some of the councilmembers may remember, you conceptually approved this project previously. Uh, we've had to go back and forth to get the cost down, uh, but this will provide us the basic function. This location, to refresh your memory, will be off of Wall Street, just past the bridge at Interfort. In other words, going towards their Walker Parkway. City already owns that land, so there's no land acquisition cost. Uh, we already have approval from EPD for a transfer site to go in there, and we recommend to you to authorize proceeding on going to bid for this project.
Mr. Gilmore, it's often Big Indian Creek Drive, is it not? Sorry, I'm right off. Often Big Indian Creek Drive, is it back in there or where is it on Ball?
No, it's closer off the ball. They, they call it Big Indian Creek Drive, but that's never been over.
But that's, is that down more in our place at all, or is it going to actually be right on Ball?
No, it's going to be over on, on Ball.
Behind the animal shelter or?
No, the other side of Wall Street.
Okay.
For those of you all may not remember, it's where we had some spoil pits back in there, and way, way, way back when, there was some dumping done back there.
Okay. Councilmembers, any other questions relative to this transfer station? And the cost is going to be paid out of the General Gap construction fund?
Yes, sir.
Here, you have questions, councilmembers, are you ready to move forward with approval of this transfer station?
Yes, here it is.
Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, you have the confirms to move forward with the transfer station?
Thank you.
Will that, I think you come to us for a bid tomorrow, I mean, to approval tomorrow night of this conference?
Oh, no, sorry. No, no, we're just initially going out to bid, so you're probably not going to see it for about thirty, forty-five days or so.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, based upon our discussion, it doesn't appear that we're going to have the ability to see the slides this evening. Uh, understand it's your recommendation that item three E one and three E two be postponed due to that fact?
That's what I originally thought, but I've been corrected. Uh, Mr. White says he's ready to go. Uh, Mr. White says he's ready to go, since you have the information in your packet, okay, and I'll leave it up to Ms. Turpin to decide if she's ready to go.
All right. Thank you. Item 3E is Office of the City Manager, so 3E one is Employee Performance Evaluation Process. Mr. White?
Well, good evening, this is actually the first time I've had a chance to attend a council work session, I haven't had the opportunity to do it in person yet, so it's a pleasure to be here, and I look forward to discussing with you the progress that was made since I was brought on board, uh, back in May. So what we're going to take you through this evening will be training that actually all the city employees around this table have already received, this was conducted for every employee, every city employee who was asked to evaluate employees, and so if you get your collective drum from those city employees, it's not because they hate me, but merely because they've been through this training a few times already, and, uh, Ms. 3E, if you keep an eye on Mr. Gilmore, can you make sure his eyes are placed over, this will be the fourth time he's been taken through this training, so. Um, I'll try to keep, uh, an eye on where, at in Board Pack, you'd be, so on the page titled Overview, we're going to be talking about, uh, some frequently asked questions that city employees asked when we first presented the idea of revising the performance evaluation system, we'll also talk a little bit about essential tasks, which comprise the fundamental essence of each city position, I'll talk about the process review, which is basically the written guidance that we put together, the instructions for how you process the evaluation form, of course, touch on the evaluation form itself, and then go into any questions that you have. Next slide you should be looking at is titled Why Do New Evaluation Process Is Wrong? So this is the Q and A, these are the questions that your city employees had when we decided that we wanted to revise the employee evaluation. So the directive essentially came from the mayor, and so in my conversations with him, I'd learned that this was essentially a ten-year process, this was a, something that had wanted to be completed for some time, and when twenty twenty finally rolled around, the mayor said, I'm putting my foot down, and finally they had a new evaluation process, need to objectively assess our employee performance based on their essential functions within the city. And again, those essential functions comprise the essence of why these positions exist within the city's classification structure, and why they merit taxpayer funded, taxpayer funded dollars. So, um, certainly in personnel, we share that vision that the mayor had, and so we took upon the task of revising the employee evaluation form. Move to the next slide, which is titled, entitled What Are We Replacing? Uh, first off was inconsistency within the evaluation process. I did a review when I came on board with the city, and I found that we had at least nine different ways in which employees were being evaluated, which I immediately red flagged, I thought that was a significant detriment to our employees, it wasn't doing them the justice that they deserved. Um, I also thought, um, that it was very difficult to align personnel management decisions within the objective assessment of that employee's performance, which is of course another problem that we had. And so we understand that asking city employees to completely restructure the way that they assess their employees is what they ask, um, but at the same time, it was something that, that needed to be done, uh, based off the mayor's perspective as well, so. The next series of three slides actually cover some of the different ways that employees were evaluated based off the old paradigm, and I want to emphasize the purpose of highlighting these different evaluation forms, uh, wasn't to, you know, fault any of the departments within the city for what they had come up with based off a vacuum of a top-driven evaluation form, um, you know, certainly no fault to them, but what I've highlighted here are the various criteria by which employees were evaluated, there was no standard criteria, there was no, uh, standard rating schedule, so you had people in the city being evaluated based off of things like organization and planning, various, public relations, emergency work, and so on. The second slide within that is titled City of Perry George is a two-pager, this was what most employees were evaluated on, again, no, no clear understanding of the rating criteria, not a great, uh, not a, not a great assessment of criteria, you know, you've got employees being evaluated for attendance, we recognize that as a fundamental aspect of every employee's responsibilities for the city is to show up work on time, for example, and then lastly, we came to the Perry Police Department Evaluation, uh, a number, a number of different criteria, I might even sure you can make them out, but the rating performance for these was at a very granular level, as opposed to that big picture essential task focus, uh, was the mayor's focus. Next Q and A we come to is, is the new evaluation form perfect? I can tell you it came out of the personnel office, the answer to that is emphatically yes, but realistically, the answer is no, there is no perfect evaluation form, um, but we did take the process very seriously with an understanding of the impact that these evaluations have on professional development and the course of an employee's career. So certainly we did, uh, the best job that we could, and as a result of the vetting process, which you see below, we're going through the Assistant City Manager, City Manager, and then finally before the mayor, we felt like we had a product that had a good legs to stand on, and we're reasonably proud of what we put forth, and we believe it will fulfill the objectives, uh, that Mayor, rest of city leadership outlined. Another question that we had, uh, was, are those departments that you did see, the previous examples, for those who had created those, their own evaluation form, we had the question of whether or not they continue, they can continue to use their own internal system. The answer to that for the short term is yes, they can, we didn't want to hamper them in whatever they had in place at the time, however, they are still required to complete this evaluation form, so what that means is they can supplement their evaluations, um, with whatever internal system they have in place, they are however required to complete this form. Next question is, why am I considered an evaluator and why is another city employee not? Uh, this directive again came from city leadership, where we wanted consistency and maximum object, objectivity in the evaluation process, and so it was ultimately restricted to the manager level, where we felt the, uh, responsibility was there, and the consistency would be there as far as equality level, to ensure that these, uh, cross divisions, shifts, and departments, we could have objective assessment of performance. The next slide titled, uh, When Do I Need To Use The New Form, it's going to go into place effectively five days ago, and so I can tell you that we've actually received a handful already, uh, they look pretty impressive, and so these are already being used, council say. Finally, when we put the form together, we did optimize it, uh, with an understanding of efficiency, it's driving a lot of our changes within the personnel department, and so we wanted to make sure that this was a product that we use, they can leverage the technology that we already have in place, so we made sure this was something that could be completed entirely on the computer, that was the way that employees almost tend to be completing it, however, it's also an option to train up for those who've been here a little bit longer and may not be comfortable with that process. Next question, what's the timeline for completing evaluations? Based off of the, um, the change, we did allow evaluators a little extra time to complete evaluations, so we'll give them thirty days, uh, notification, so typically that'll be at the beginning of the month, we'll let you know which evaluations are due for the following month, uh, and then they have ten calendar days on the back end to ensure that we get all the necessary signatures for evaluations. And the last question that we have before we come to an overview of the essential tasks is, how do you expect me and my employees to distill our responsibilities down to eight essential tasks? And this has been the biggest thinking point to roll out this evaluation, is some of the responses we've received from city employees have understandably been, you think that I only do eight tasks a day, there's no way that's realistic, but again, the emphasis here is a ten thousand foot view of each, of each job responsibilities. So as you sit there as city leadership, when you think about what it is that these city employees are doing, um, essentially, you should be able to articulate their essential tasks to be addressed with, right? You should have some understanding of, for example, what police officer does within the city, what essential functions they're serving, and so when we are tasked to explain to city employees how they've come, come about deriving their essential tasks, that was kind of the focus that we have, is a ten thousand foot view, this isn't every individual item we're completing on a day-to-day basis, this is more fundamental than that, and again, this is the reason the position merits taxpayer funded dollars. Finally, we come to the example of essential tasks, uh, the first one that we came to was Assistant City Manager, um, aside, congratulations to him and his family, Robert could really have done, distilled these down, I think, to just one, to essentially respond to the city manager, but always the go-getter, he came up with seven, I think, really good essential tasks, really good examples of essential tasks here. One of the things I want you to pay attention to on his in particular is I should go through them, each of these essential tasks comprise significant range of different responsibilities that he has, but again, this is the, the top-down, ten thousand foot view of his role, and this is what you're going to be covered. Similar with the Finance Director, uh, Mitchell did a great job of outlining the roles and responsibilities that he has at a high level, then of course, you've got Community Patients' Manager, Tabitha back there is doing a great job of fulfilling essential task number seven, which is providing technical support, filling the passing needs of special needs, and then the last one we came to is Police Officer Two, which is one that I put together based off the existing job description, and again, this is just to show that this is possible, it is being done across the city, so all city employees are underway, uh, completing new job descriptions based off of the essential tasks, and last time we had over fifty already completed, so that shows a great deal of progress on his front. Next item we come to is the process review, so as we rolled out the evaluation form, we knew we needed some instruction for city employees on how they could complete it, so we put together a four-page document outlining that, and all that we do now is highlight just a few of the changes, most of the different changes that were rolled out, the first thing, an out-of-schedule evaluation, previously we didn't have a way of evaluating employees when their evaluator left, um, so based off promotion, we went to, we went on to employment elsewhere, uh, those employees in most cases would lose that evaluation, or that period of performance when the evaluator left, and we thought, again, it wasn't doing justice for them, and so in this new process, we want to give the department head or a high-level authority may request an evaluator who is making his or her position, complete an out-of-schedule evaluation of any employee for any evaluator who's responsible, provided at least one-hundred-and-eighty days of supervision have a last. So if you've been supervising someone for six months and you're going to leave that position, we believe it is your responsibility to complete an evaluation, so the department head or higher level employee may request to do so. These do not change the annual date of the employee's evaluation, so will still receive that evaluation at the end of the year period, as a result of that, we're not warranting their increases of schedule, so it's important to place in there as well. For overdue evaluations, which is the next phase we'll come to, uh, evaluations not given to personnel, the office, by the systems state that we outlined previously, so that's thirty days of notification provided by ten days after the due date of the evaluation, those employees, those evaluators will be required to submit a notice of due evaluation. Again, we want to make sure that we're providing our employees with the mayor increases on schedule, and giving them to do justice for their good performance in the reporting period, so we felt it was important to ensure that there was a way to track the overdue evaluations as quickly as possible. The final item I wanted to highlight in the process portion was the Performance Improvement Plan. Uh, evaluators have talked many times about instituting a performance improvement plan, but because there was no template available, in my little time here, we had never seen one, I don't believe Karen had for a very long amount of time, and so we felt it was important to put a template for this together as well, which we've done, and the perform, the purpose of a performance improvement plan, in essence, is to, is a short-term, goal-oriented strategy for employees who you feel additional attention is going to warrant, improvement in their performance up to the minimum expectation. So it's important to distinguish this, a performance improvement plan, from other disciplinary personnel measures that would be justified in other circumstances, such as, for example, an employee who's already, who has already received sufficient training, and for whom you don't think that additional focus is really important in these technical things. So this, this isn't an adverse disciplinary measure, it is more than anything a tool for these employees to give a little bit more attention, but again, it's not something for which adverse disciplinary measures should instead be pursued for those, you know, occasions of misconduct or something. Probationary employees can be placed on a performance improvement plan, that's the purpose of the probationary period, to ensure that they're, um, developing in accordance with minimum expectations, so that's why I felt that that wasn't the tool that evaluators would have, given they had twelve receiving months to get them to their fulfillment. And then the last item on the performance improvement plan is, any employee that receives an unsatisfactory needs improvement on their annual evaluation is automatically placed on a performance improvement plan, and at the end of that period, which is three months after they close that gate of their annual evaluation, that evaluator effectively has two decisions, to take them off the dip without, uh, any recommendation beyond that, or to pursue more adverse disciplinary actions up to the determination. Next item we come to is the evaluation form itself, so it's a three-page evaluation, and I'll go through it section by section briefly, um, the first one being, uh, basic identifying information on employees, as well as the rating criteria, that's your standard one, three, five scale, and one being unsatisfactory at two exceptional at a five rating. The first significant section that we come to is those essential tasks, so this is eight or fewer tasks, again, the fundamental essence of each employee's position, and we wanted to ensure that there was deliberate intention made to task proficiency initiative and motivation to accomplish the specific objectives, so you see the eight essential tasks highlighted here, as well as the rating number right inside, and then there is a comments portion down below, where you can flesh out your justification for the rating, that's especially important if you're receiving a rating highly under that scale, where you need to justify why, or you receive that rating. Next significant section we come to is professional development, where a rating of employee is something to be cumulative impact of professional development progress has had on that employee within the reporting period, so if you like, we've got seven categories fleshed out here, including advancement of job proficiency, attainment of additional training, attainment of additional education, expansion of job and city-related knowledge of the non-essential tasks, improvements, innovations suggested and/or implemented for existing processes, advancement of communication skills within the department standards, and finally, training of others within the department. So this is a, the best way we saw being able to rate an employee's professional development within the reporting period, we thought this is a great way to leverage the hard work that these employees in most cases are already doing, to increase their abilities, their understanding of the city's structure, and so on, as well as the education and training that most cities, again, that most city employees are already receiving, and for which the in-classification pay adjustment schedule within the city works as well. The final portion we come to is character competencies, where a rating of employees based on their disposition related to traits like work ethic, customer service delivery, treatment of and effectiveness with colleagues, ethical decision-making skills, their initiative to complete tasks and respond on timely requests, as well as originality and creativity, and, you know, it's certainly possible that you'll have employees who are absolutely fantastic at their essential tasks, they pursue professional development, but for whatever reason their customer service is lacking, their ability with their colleagues is lacking, um, and just merits additional attention, so we again felt like character was something that was especially important to pull out and provide on its own ratings board. And again, you have a comment section there, and you can justify your reasons. Finally, we come to evaluation results, where we tally up the employee's score, provide a recommendation regarding merit increase, and again, any employee who receives those bottom two ratings will not warrant a merit increase and will be placed on a performance improvement plan. And then finally, in section seven, expectations and goals for the next evaluation period, again, this was a section where, uh, we gradually evaluated across the city, were really falling down in terms of doing justice to city employees, namely by not providing quantifiable substantive recommendations for the next reporting period. So we often receive things like show up to work on time, they're putting down certifications, um, like a C D O driver's license for positions where it was already mandated, um, so just not doing due justice for our employees, and providing here an actual expectations for them in the reporting period, and so we certainly pulled that out and said that, you know, we need to have the expectations that exceed the minimum standard for city employees, but also an understanding of, when you're preparing the employee's next evaluation of following year, you're going to look at this section and see how they compare on these expectations and goals, and if they didn't meet those, then that'll be something that will be included in the preceding sections. Finally, we've got the basic evaluation acknowledgement, so the employee has signed, the evaluator, and then finally, the department head, and that brings me to the end, so what questions do you have?
I think this is great, after we have been meeting this for a long time. Great.
Appreciate it.
Councilmen, other questions or comments?
Just a good-looking instrument, and obviously a lot of work at one of all, but tonight with this done, and it looks like you've lived ever in the world of education, you know, about the evaluation, you know, pretty great of a basis, Frank, Philistine, so we, um, this looks great, I just had some, just a personal question about it.
Sure.
Um, when you said that some jobs were having to be, or some job descriptions being kind of tweaked because of the essential task, how will the employees be made aware of these are the essential tasks that are expected of you?
Sure, we actually discussed this in a management meeting earlier today, we're making sure that all employees have access to the revised job descriptions, and a message on that will be going out later this week.
Of, for each one of them?
Correct.
Okay, and then my other question was, um, at the end, where you have expectations and goals, how are they related to the essential tasks? Are those things that maybe they're falling short in the essential tasks, but therefore goals need to be added, or is it just some expansion maybe?
Typically, typically, yeah, typically they wouldn't be, so expectations and goals would be, um, things that are beyond essential tasks, so essential tasks are going to be already contained in the job description, if an employee is having deficiencies within those essential tasks, that will be captured in section one of the evaluation, expectations and goals are most closely aligned with professional development, so those would be increased education and training and things along that nature.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mr. White, I'd like to, really, really.
Mr. White, I'd like to... You guys really did a great job on this thing. And I know it's taken a lot of time and a lot of energy, but you have a product I think that your group can be extremely proud of. And I think that it's going to work extremely well for all employees throughout the workforce here in the period. So I appreciate what you guys have done on this.
Thank you, ma'am.
If there's no other questions, thank you, Mr. White. Appreciate that. Council members relative to that, we had talked about having an executive session this evening, but after we reviewed the length of the agenda for this evening, we have elected to move that until tomorrow. So we'll have that at the time to do the work that we had to do. Thank you for that understanding. Ms. Turpin, would you like to do your presentation?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So it's my understanding that first I'm supposed to give you a recap on the Colorful Community event that we had in September. And there was a short video that I wanted to show you all, but if you'd like to view that, it is on our social media Facebook page. And basically, I just wanted to let you know that the event was a success. We had a little bit of rain that weekend, but we still had a wonderful turnout. Before the event got started, that Thursday and Friday, Leisure Services Department helped me with handing out kits that were pre-made for members of the community to come and pick up for free. And as you know, all those kits did contain some fun art things that people could do at home or as a part of our event. So on that Thursday and Friday, and then we had a couple of leftover on Saturday as well. So over the course of that weekend, we did hand out over 300 kits. So I just wanted to say big thank you to Leisure Services Department for their assistance with that. And Nancy shared with me that they had a great time meeting people as they came and picked up their kits, lots of great interactions with the public and the community. And then I also wanted to say thank you to our Public Works Department for cleaning the trail and getting that prepped nice and clean for everybody to come and visit it. It was great publicity for our trails, lots of people who had never been there before or who haven't visited for a while did come out to be a part of that event. Anytime that you're planning an event right now with COVID, it's a little tricky trying to navigate how to move forward. Everybody's kind of in a different spot. So it feels really good whenever you host an event and you actually don't get any negative feedback, which is what we got with this event. It was all positive feedback from the community. Lots of great comments about how nice it was just to get out with the family, still be able to social distance, still be able to do something that was enjoyable for the kids and free. So overall, the My Colorful Community event was a success. And I appreciate you guys letting me put that on for the city. It was really enjoyable to be a part of. And one of the comments was that they hope that it becomes an annual event, which originally this was supposed to be tied into our Art in the Park event. So I think it was a great way to kind of test out, learn some things that work, learn what doesn't, and when we do resume those bigger events like Art in the Park, to have them be a part of it.
Thank you. It was a fun event. I think everybody that was there had a great time. Your professional artists did an outstanding job.
She did. And actually, from that, the art that she did there, we actually had the group that she worked with turn that into a graphic, a digital graphic. So Tabitha and myself were going to put our heads together to figure out what we can do with marketing that on T-shirts or postcards or things like that. Then Haley also mentioned the possibility of doing banners as well. So finding a way to take that graphic that was temporarily on the ground with chalk and unfortunately got washed away far too soon, and then making it somewhat permanent on different memorabilia.
Council members, any questions relative to My Colorful Community?
Got one thing. Keep a good look.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so also, I am here to update you all on the GrubCrawl. As you know, last month, we hosted our first GrubCrawl, which is a temporary alternative to Food Truck Fridays, given 2020 and COVID. I think the response from the community was wonderful. And our food truck vendors were very, very happy just to have something to be at. I will be honest, initially, whenever the event kicked off, several vendors did admit that they were a little concerned because four o'clock was a little slow. But by five o'clock, 5:30, they were all very, very busy. And by 7:30, a majority of our vendors had sold out, so over an hour before the event actually officially ended. We definitely had some learning curves. There were some things that happened that were beyond our control, such as lighting issues, flooding issues at certain locations, trucks not showing up. So things that we had to work through. However, for the most part, I think the event was very well-received. And we do plan to host another GrubCrawl on Friday, October 23rd. We're going to stick with the same timeframe, just because I think that earlier start allows some people who want to come out earlier before those crowds to get there to have that time to do that. We are going to add in four locations, so that brings our total to 13. I believe you all should have the PDF with what we're looking at. So basically, the new locations that we're hoping to utilize to make this event larger and spread the crowds out a little bit more is to first bring in Perry Joke Park. I think that'll be a great opportunity for people to view that park maybe for the first time and realize the potential that that has for events in the future. And also utilize Perry City Hall. Unfortunately, we weren't able to utilize that one for the GrubCrawl because we had some issues with vendors. So we definitely want to use that for this one. I think that'll be a great location. AD Redding Park, bringing that one on. Unfortunately, that site was flooded, so we weren't able to utilize that at the last GrubCrawl. Hopefully, we won't run into that again this time. And then also, the Go Fish Education Center. I met with the representative from Go Fish last week, and they are incredibly excited. They were ecstatic that we thought to include them on this. They realized what a marketing opportunity this is for them, even talking about leaving their outdoor restrooms open. They have lighting out there, leaving their lights on, and possibly extending their hours as well. So they're just really excited to be a part of it. I think that between having those 13 locations and then also implementing at some of our larger locations where we have the parking lot capacity, having three trucks there rather than just two will help to reduce some of the crowds, the lines, and the frustration that if you get there and one vendor is sold out, that other vendor might still be able to help you. So we are in the process of finalizing all of the vendors. We have enacted a deposit where vendors pay a deposit fee. And as long as they show up and do not back out, we have stipulations in place. As long as they abide by those rules, and when they show up and park and cleared their health department inspection and their inspection by our fire marshal, then they will get that deposit back. So we're still doing them the service of coming to the city of Perry and doing their business as they have. But we're also helping to make sure that they have some skin in the game to actually show up and be a part of our event. So we'll be moving forward with that, and hopefully I can have a map to you all by your next council session. Any questions that you might have in regards to the October GrubCrawl?
Come in to council. Look forward to the 23rd.
Okay, thank you. And then also, I have for you the Halloweekalita, so you have a flyer, and I think you also have it as a PDF as well. This is a new event. It wasn't on the 2020 calendar. It's kind of one of those COVID hail mary throws. Basically, because the My Colorful Community event was a success and it was very low-key, it had to impact a lot of staff or overtime hours or anything like that. Lots of people are looking for safe ways to celebrate Halloween. Unfortunately, lots of festivals and events are being canceled still due to COVID. So we are kind of taking the My Colorful Community idea and putting a fall/halloween theme to it. Similarly, we are going to be having another chalk walk. We have plenty of chalk still left from the Colorful Community event. So we'll be setting out chalk and encouraging people to do Halloween or fall-themed chalk art along our trail. But some of the new things that we're going to add to it is we have... I brought with me one of my friendly ghosts. So we are going to be hanging a number of friendly ghosts throughout the Halloweekalita trail that families can go and hunt for up in the trees and then let us know how many they find. And we'll have prizes for people who interact with us. And then also, we will be enacting a story walk. So what that is, if you haven't seen it before, is where you take pages from a children's book and you place them periodically throughout the trail so that as a family is walking, the parents are reading to the child, or maybe the child is reading to the parents. And the further along you get on the trail, the further along you get on the story. So it's educational, it's physical activity, but it's also a really great way to social distance. They're not touching anything, they're not turning pages. It's really just a perfect event for COVID. So we're hopeful that this will be a success. It's going to take place the weekend of Friday, October 30th through Sunday, November 1st. And it's pretty much come at your own leisure, just like the My Colorful Community was. So we aren't expecting crowds or any issues like that.
Questions, Councilman?
That's a great idea. It would be cool.
Thank you.
There, I'd like to comment. I really appreciate the context of COVID and the creativity that the city is going to still make an attempt on. I appreciate that, Ms. Turpin.
Thank you. I also have one last topic that I didn't get on girl's agenda, but I just wanted to let you know that our Yoga in the Park series completed last month. Despite 2020, it was an incredibly successful year. Last year, our strongest attendance was about 120. This year, we still got up to about 80 participants. So given the fact that some people are still sheltering in place, they're not comfortable going out, I still think 80 is a great number. And all of the feedback that we got was that people would love to see that Yoga in the Park series extended. A lot of people gave feedback of extending it by just a couple of months. Many people gave feedback of giving it all year round, multiple times a month. But one of the common things was that people also asked for different types, not just yoga. So dance, fitness, boot camp, HIIT, cardio, whatever. So what we're going to do over the next two months, October, November, is just test out some different types of classes and see how the community responds to it. So in all of your boxes, I did place a flyer for a fall fitness series that we're doing. So every Saturday for the next two months, we'll be offering free fitness classes at Perry Joke's Park. And we'll just see how people respond to the different classes. And whatever seems to be the most successful, we'll try to implement some of those programs into our 2021 season. So please let your friends and family know that they can come and exercise with us at Perry Joke's Park.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all the hard work you are doing and great ideas.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Item 3E3, the Census and Budget Filling. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Nowhere near as interesting and exciting as Ms. Turpin's presentation. We currently have approximately 88 customers that are on budget billing. Budget billing means you pay the same amount each month underneath our currency for the city services bill. And at the end of each year, you have to settle on it. So if you owe money, you have to pay us. If we took too much, we paid you better. That has a tendency to be kind of difficult, particularly, for example, if it is a cold winter with the gas customers. So you have a proposal that's been provided to you by Ms. Sanders, talking about shifting over having an automated system. The advantage with that primarily is it eliminates that final closeout time frame. So it constantly will go back and adjust. There cannot be adjustment any more than 5% between month, month, and another. And in addition to that, this should save approximately 20 hours or so of overtime that was required for doing the setup on an annual basis. And so my recommendation to you, it's compatible with HINCO, and our recommendation to you would be that you authorize us to proceed with that.
Council members, what questions do you have about our budget billing process? Do you have any concerns relative to the changes? Here in there, do we have concurrence to move forward? Mr. Gilmore, you have concurrence to move forward with the new billing process?
Thank you.
Back to you. Item 3E4 is the review of organizations. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Following up on your August 3rd direction, I have provided to you reviews of two organizations. The first one is the Perry Public Arts Commission. You have the material to go through. The recommendation from the administration is to eliminate this commission. Members have been very diligent in trying to activate an interest in the arts in our community and basically have not had that much success with it. As I also have mentioned to you in the report, we've had difficulty recruiting members to participate or stay on the commission. So the recommendation to you would be that this commission is eliminated.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Council members, questions relative to the recommendation to eliminate the Public Arts Commission? Are you prepared to accept the recommendation you confirmed? Mr. Gilmore, you have concurrence from the council to move forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Proceed. Next agency that was reviewed is Main Street Advisory Board. Ms. Bryant is here to answer any questions you have. She had a report in there. This has been a good active board. They've done a lot of work while projects and everything. I think one of the most recent, which of course I liked, didn't cost the city any money. If you take a look at downtown, the decorating that they were doing for Halloween and everything is a good example of Main Street Board interacting well with the businesses. However, the administration does have one recommendation to council, and that would be to change the nomination and appointment process, which currently is there are a number of members who are identifying the code, and they recommend persons to council for appointment. What we recommend is to eliminate that portion, and council as a whole appoint whoever they think the best members would be to sit on that board. Could very well pull people from these different groups if you so decide, but not have the requirement with them. And this should address one of the concerns you may have noted in there was attendance by some of the board members.
When would that take effect, Mr. Gilmore? Would that be immediate or immediate?
No. If you impurged... Well, I guess we're all practical purposes shifts. But the process would be if you impurged to do that, the city attorney prepares a necessary amendment that would come to you and would be done as part of the process.
And then the nomination process would start at that point in time when people who are truly interested in serving on that board...
Correct. And they could very well come from these groups. Yeah, well, some of them could.
It's not mandatory to ask them. That's right. Council members, questions?
I want to understand what you're saying, is that the people who are already on the board, are they going to select somebody who are interested in the board and bring them to us that we decide that we want to recruit? How that works?
Let me give you an example, okay? You have approved to cancel Perry Public Arts Commission. Underneath the current ordinance, they nominate somebody to serve on the Main Street Advisory Board. When you make this change, when you have a vacancy on the Main Street Advisory Board, that group or anybody or whoever you may think would be appropriate, and you can get a series of suggested names, and we followed up on... I think it came from Ms. Peterson about statement of interest. Whoever indicates they have an interest in serving, then they would all be brought to you. It wouldn't have to be somebody just from the Perry Public Arts Commission. And then you select who that person you think would be most appropriate to serve on the board.
I think that's a good point. Like you said, people have to be interested and want to be on the board. And my question to you was that, if people who are already on the board are either someone else who knows people, have been talking to them, and find they're interested, then that's how the nomination process is going to go?
The council as a whole, or one on one?
Council as a whole.
As a whole, okay.
Other questions? Do we have any concurrence to move forward with the recommendation?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore, you have concurrence to move forward with the work of all of you. Mr. Gilmore, you have concurrence to move forward with the resolution coming back, changing that board makeup?
Thank you.
For the budget process. Item 5 is authorized professional service agreements. Mr. Gilmore, 5A is design services.
Thank you, Mayor. In your package, you have the information from JMA Architects. You may remember you appointed that firm to be the architect for the renovation of the old courthouse to be the new city hall. He provides a list of tasks that he recommended we get started with. Projected cost of that is $23,080. Funding source is from Perry Public Facilities Construction Fund, and we recommend to you to rise to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Questions? Do we have concurrence and do we move forward with JMA starting to put the recommendations together for the new courthouse? Mr. Gilmore, you have concurrence. Please move forward. Next is 5A is engineering services. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Also in your package is a proposal from Saunders Engineering Consultants to prepare the field survey, concept plans, and right-of-way plans for the south Langston Road extension. Council members, you remember we talked about that project, I believe, at your last meeting. This would be funded from SPOS. The overall cost over time would be $242,000. We are recommending to proceed with Saunders Engineering because we have good experience with them, and this is also the firm that the House and County Board of Commissioners uses for their street projects. And remember, we had talked about working with this in conjunction with the House and County Board of Commissioners? And if we are successful, we are hoping that the construction costs will be done on the next upcoming SPOS, which is why we want to involve the House and County Board of Commissioners as well.
Question? Are you helping with concurring to move forward with recommendations, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore, you have concurrence. Please move forward with that recommendation.
Thank you.
Item 3E is Perry Public Arts Park. 3E1 is an update on the Stonegate, Stonegate, I have to speak. Lady Gobson?
Lady Council, in your eye, you're leading. I'm remembering, pretending, radar operating protection sign. The sign is made by Traffic Solutions. They have the permission from the city manager and company. They allow us to test the sign. And when we received it, we decided to test it at the Stonegate Trail if we had a traffic issue on that road. Before we discuss the result of the report that generated by the sign.
Talk to your mayor.
I just wanna, I wanna point out a few things about the sign and the difference. Basically, I can see the report, you know, talks about the speed, the number of vehicles that you have to treat, sign location, speed, minimum speed, maximum speed, all of that. The sign can be operated in three modes. The radar mode, which is like, what do you say, you got your covert mode, with the sign is blank, you can't show any display, vehicle speed or anything like that. Again, you got the speed sign, it just flashes to 25 miles per hour. So that's the three modes that we have. And the report that you see in front of you, that's gonna be the radar mode, that what you double, you're gonna see in front of you. The sign will store data in the cloud and it will allow me to sit in my office and be able to talk to anyone, any person who comes in with a complaint and allow me to show them where their complaint may be, whether they have a speed problem or not. So that's very important in what we do with that. So if you turn to the second page, you'll see a copy, I mean, you'll see a picture of the sign as it stands on Stonegate Trail. This is how the sign looks, and that's big setting up when we did the test. If you turn to the third page, the initial reports indicate that we don't have a serious problem on Stonegate Trail as far as speedy vehicles. And I'm gonna show you this when we go through the sign. But I just wanna just run over the, what the, the report that the sign generates. If you look up to the top, you'll see the type of report and that is generated by me on September 24th, 2020, at 11:30 AM, 11:30 PM. And then just below that, it gives you the day, the time of date, the sign is being operated, the dates that it was operated on. If you look over to the right of that, you'll see the site location. The site location is Stonegate Trail westbound. And that is coming down from, if you're going out of the Stonegate onto Goer Road. The overall summary, the total days that we, that the sign captured on data, data is six days. The speed limit on that street is 25. The average speed on that street in this period was 20.4 miles an hour. As you can see, 50% percentile, speed was 19.37 miles per hour. And 85% percentile was 24.7 miles per hour. Looking over at the maximum, minimum speed on the opposite side is 5 miles per hour, and the maximum speed was 40 miles per hour. And the average angle, the average volume per day was 143 vehicles per day on that street. So this time does a lot of things and print out several different types of reports. This is just one of them. If you look at the chart below that, we might have moved through all of it, but I just wanna show you here. Where you see the zero to 100, that's the number of vehicles. And where you see the 3 zeros to 2200, that's gonna be the time. And if you can see, the compliant is, you see the green, the orange, and the red under there, the square blocks. You can see the compliance is 25 miles, anything's 25 miles and below. And inside threshold is 26 to 35 miles, that's that 10 mile over. And the volume is anything 36 miles and higher. And if you can see, there's not many violas on that street. And if you turn the next page, I wanna show you. If you go down to the very bottom of the page, if you go down to the very bottom of the page, you can see the total number of vehicles that traveled that road from September 18th through the 23rd. So six days, it was 861. We had seven violas during that six days, which it creates about 0.5%. And the average number of vehicle per day on that road is 201 vehicles. And the average number of violas per day is 1.5. The minimum speed was 5, and the maximum speed could be up from, when they say, when you see 40 there, that could be up from 36 to 40 miles an hour. So that don't mean 40, it could be 36 to 40. But the highest they cause, the driver, the driver was 40 miles an hour. And then the, again, the average speed was 20.4 miles an hour. And he had a 50% percentile is 19.4. And the 85% percentile is 24.7. Now, that is the, that's the first report. The second report, if you turn over to the next page, it's on, it's on the same street, but it's on opposite side of the street. So we get westbound, and then we get eastbound. If you look at the top right, you'll see Stonegate Trail eastbound. Y'all see that? Okay? And then we have the same data. Again, if you look at the chart, you got the green, the orange, and the violas, you see that you don't see that many violas. I think at 12, 1258, you'll see a viola at that time on that particular chart. Everybody following?
I just have one question. Eastbound, are we talking about the main?
We're talking about, we're talking about, we're talking about Stonegate Trail. I'm saying the, if you're coming off Goer Road.
Going into the suburb.
Going into the suburb.
It's eastbound, coming out west.
We're gonna go that eastbound. That's gonna be eastbound. Coming out of Stonegate onto Goer Road, just that westbound. So we getting, the traffic both ways?
On Goer Road.
Yes, ma'am. No, ma'am, on Stonegate. On Stonegate.
But Goer Road doesn't, I mean, Goer Road does east and west, right?
No, north and south.
Goer Road does, okay, I just stopped talking since I won't be over your marriage, but.
Yeah, right, yeah, right.
Stonegate Trail does east and west?
I'm just looking at the, I'm just giving a name. Let's just say we're giving a name. We're giving the report a name so I know what side of the street. I gave it for me so I know what side the street was on. I said it was eastbound coming.
Going in.
Going in. And I said it was westbound coming out.
Okay. I was thinking.
You're good. Now, let's turn to the other page on this one. So now, now notice the difference in the traffic volume. This report shows that there was 1,558 vehicles during this six-day period. And if you see, if you notice the violas went up, it was 16 violas. And that was, the percent of violas was 1.2%. The average number of vehicles per day was around, it said 399, around 400 per vehicle per day that traveled that street. And the average viola, average number of violas was 4.3 per day. And the maximum speed was 41, so it was 37 to 41, that was the maximum speed. The average speed was 21.2 miles, and 50% percentile was 21.8, and the 85% percentile was 27.3. So based on the initial report or the test reports that we had, we don't see a big problem at the Stonegate Trail at this time. So, but my point was, is this, this is a good tool that we can use as a police department. And if you looked at the last page, you'd see the report, the cost is $4,540. So it's a good tool that citizens can come in, from police department or city hall, that we can bring them into office, sit them down, and pull up that report. As long as the sign has been up, we can pull up that report and show them what's going on on their particular street and what problems they have or may not have. So with that, do anyone have any questions about the signs or anything like that? I also like to invite, if you're not doing anything one day, come on by our office, have a glass of tea or something. And I can, we can go over the sign, and I can show it to you and let you see how it operates. And, but I hope that you manage to get at least one, to purchase at least one.
Both reports look like you got one speed.
Sure.
It looks like you have one speed and you have.
Oh, yes.
Just like the time I had one person running about 40 miles an hour.
That might, that might be me. I had tested that. I had tested out, but that might be me. Now, granted, there's another report that we can run to make sure that, that what we see is accurate. And that's the Coburn Report. The Coburn Report, the sign is blank. You drive acid every day, you think it's not working, but they're capturing your speed and all of that. But we can always use that as another tool. And if we do need it, I would like to.
Gotcha.
Do that. I like to put it on Coburn mode and just, just see what happened over the three days period.
Council members, questions? Comments? What's it gonna do with your speed?
Well, see, this, this is a great, this sign is a great tool because a lot of times it helps, it allows us to be proactive with the number of, with the limited number of resources we have, only so. I can say to my guests, they say, okay, we need to send somebody over to Stonegate. They got some speeding, we got some speeding problems. Or we need to send somebody over on Langston Road or whatever part of the city we need to send them in. We got some speeding problems. I can do that without anybody even coming to you or me and say, let's take care of the problem. We can do that by our own, being proactive in our city.
This is very impressive to me.
It is. It's very impressive, and it gives you some paper to work with.
The rest of those Stonegate people are awesome. They show the distance, they really love the problem.
Yeah.
It's really a perception more than anything else. Because of the volume you get, I can't imagine that on that one street that you've got almost 1,600 trips a week.
Yeah, and you see that report you're looking at, that last report, that report was on Saturday through Friday. So Saturday through Friday, and the other report, the first one, was, I think it was on Friday through Wednesday. So you got Friday through Wednesday, that's 861. And you got Saturday through Friday, which is 50, which is 1,558. So I think it might be you got a full week plus a Saturday in there. And then you got construction going over in that neighborhood also. So you got your trucks coming in and out, the maintenance people coming in and out. So I think that might be one of the reasons it might be more.
I was saying, nice construction trucks going through the Stonegate, Stonegate?
Stonegate.
There should not be any construction.
I don't, it might not be just from trucks, it might be the crew coming in and out like that.
So for single-family residential, the average trips per day generally is somewhere from 8 to 10. It's about 55, so you would expect there to be somewhere between 400 and 550 average days per day.
Now, what is exactly your comment tonight? Is it the machine or is it Stonegate?
Ma'am, we're gonna be both, both. We'll say both. We, it's a machine.
Is this like your, your portable one that would have to be moved from place to place if you only have one of them?
Yes, ma'am. This is, this is, this is better than what we, the one we have right now. It's like a dinosaur, it's old.
But you would only have one of these?
We don't, no, we don't own these.
I mean, if you, if you have one, it would only, we would only have one.
Unless y'all, unless y'all decided to buy us two, give us two. Unless y'all, unless y'all decided to buy us two, give us two.
Anyway, I'm, I'm just gonna go on here, I know y'all will hopefully bring them to us there, but, um, I just kept always hanging for the human factor to be left out. Um, these people worked hard to get probably about seventy percent, um, what am I trying to say? No, um, no.
Petition?
Where everybody signed up.
Oh right.
Yeah, petition, excuse me. Uh, made two trips around. We didn't have a machine like this then.
Right.
So it's just kind of like changing votes in midstream to me, for them.
Right.
Um, it would be a show that this disturbed that.
That would make a lot.
Would have had some impact, so I just kind of think it's, you know, it's kind of unfortunate that this will have to come to them after they've done so much work to get it. And like we talked about before, they could sign a petition for that, whether it be the property owner or the person who lived there. We talked about the, what it could be the person who lived there, because they see it every day and they live there, okay? So, I'm, I know y'all were waiting for me to say it, so I'm just gonna put that out there. But I feel kind of badly for the people that worked so hard, uh, to get a high percentage of signatures on the petition.
If we, if we get another, if we get the sign and we just morgue for two weeks, we can, we can, uh, we, we can do another study if you like and make sure, you know, make a few, you know, make sure that we, uh, our data is correct and, and everything, just make, you know, check it a second time. And maybe a, maybe a little longer period at this time, if that make, make it better.
I just think, I feel a little caught off guard by this, 'cause I didn't know this was out here and I know that those people have worked so hard for it, so.
Right.
Um, have you had a conversation with them?
Uh, Mr. Hendricks, no. Uh, I know Mr. Hendricks, uh, real good, so, and I haven't had a conversation with him. I haven't shown him the data yet, but normally what I would do, uh, uh, I would bring him in the office and I can pull it up on the computer. And we'll have a conversation at, at that time. I think he's gonna, he's gonna be one of the leading people that we're gonna have to convince.
When, when he was.
I think the data will show that also.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am. Yeah, questions?
I think the request for us is for one machine in this point in time, is that correct, Ms. Gilmore?
Well, I think Major Phelps' request would be eight or ten. Recommendation from the administration is we get one.
And we'll try it out and see if it works and see if we, you know, it's effective. So councilmembers, uh, concurrents of about one machine at this point in time and test it out to see, count data?
Yes.
It costs four thousand five hundred and forty dollars. Okay. Gilmore, we have concurrents to purchase one machine. And I think probably it might be some in the future if it's worked as well as, uh, showed early on some. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes sir.
Very interesting information.
Thank you.
Item three G is Department of Leisure Services. Three G one is athletic facility rental fees. Mr. Schwan?
Thank you, Mayor, council. I want to start off asking if you get two signs, one for the traffic park.
Yeah.
And then one.
You're gonna have to speak into your mind, so.
I had to try, had to try. Uh, I won't stand before you long, um, I'm here to present, uh, metal detector guidelines. Uh, with our city grown, we noticed that, uh, the interest, our leisure interest, um, have grown and evolved. And we have a few citizens that are interested in doing metal detection. So I thought this would be a great time to establish a policy and, uh, put, you know, standardize the process. Uh, if you, if you will, you see in the guidelines are recommended, I, I won't go through all of them, but I think the high points are, we issue a six month permit. We have them renew the permit every six months. Uh, and then we ask that they don't dig or, uh, they aren't intrusive to our progress. So I think that's the main points of this, uh, guidelines. Y'all don't have any other questions? Y'all do have any questions, I'm glad to answer them, so.
You have any questions there?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I got one. Uh, thinking about it and you saying that we got people who want to bring their building and take it out at Georgia Park, or you go around. But then if they find something, you're saying they can't dig it?
They can't. No, sir, you can't dig it. Can't, they can't dig it with any equipment. Uh, if you're successful with your hands or feet or any other kind of equipment, you can say you're able to get, get the item out of the ground. That way, we just don't want to encourage them to dig on our property, excuse me, on our property.
But what's the problem happening then if I can't dig it, you know, people are finding it?
You know, they find.
You know, I'm like, I say, you know, you know.
No, you know, if I dig something up, I gotta fill it back up, you understand, if I'm, if I'm finding something. So, this is, let's say this is a good time to bring up something, unless we know we got something to make more, if they detect it out and you want my house.
Yes, sir. And we, we, we have a matter currently that, uh, use the metal detecting devices and they know that we, you know, after discussions, we, we inform them that we don't want to dig. Uh, they were, hopefully find arrowheads or some store coins on the top surface of the ground, but we don't want to dig, uh, in our parks, you know. You gotta call before you dig.
So if I find something, I gotta call somebody and use it for?
They, that'd be a discussion we have to have?
Okay.
Yes, sir. And, and that's one of the, uh, uh, I think it, I have the, the department has the opportunity to approve any, any digging or any retrieval of any items that you might find, so I want to make sure that it's not freelance.
So in other words, you're saying it has to be approved on the city?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Is there legal to leave an arrowhead?
Yes, yes ma'am.
I believe that.
So it's just, where does the permit say that they're allowed to use it? Are they allowed to use it in cemeteries or are they allowed to use it?
Also around the trails.
Around the trails?
Trail, yes, sir, in open areas. We restrict it in such areas like ball fields, uh, open play areas, around playgrounds, any tent areas. So I, I, I find, uh, uh, cemeteries with tents there, they won't be able to detect it.
I think you need to be clear with the, the large number of people going, going to our cemeteries.
I agree, you know, bad, only if you want to tend to it.
You can't be digging in there.
Any other questions pertaining to the? My second item on the agenda is, uh, uh, as you remember, I think a few meetings back I presented. I'm sorry, as you remember, a few, a few meetings back I presented some, uh, rental fees, specific tournament fees. You can find that, a lot of our citizens want to, uh, rent our facilities for tournaments. I think that would be a good revenue source. So, once again, we noticed that our tennis facility doesn't currently have a rental fee structure. And we found that our Creekwood, the football field at Creekwood Park does not have a specific rental fee attached to it. So these recommendations are to add, uh, a formal price on these facilities. And, uh, I listed in the specification, of course, all of our tournaments we ask of individuals that are interested in renting our facility to have a one million dollar liability insurance policy. That alleviates the city from losing liability. And with Barber Cat Home, that's one of our highly, uh, frequented areas for tennis. So I wanted to establish, uh, in, in essence of some blackout days, when we find a high traffic time, uh, that our community comes out and uses it in their leisure. So we don't want to disturb and take away from, you know, what our citizens do, uh, for recreation. But we do want to take advantage of the opportunity to make some revenue off of our facility.
Do you have, currently have somebody teaching at Barber Cat?
Uh, no, we don't have an instructor that's been approved by the city. This is a very confusing statement.
So, but you would, you would allow somebody to block it out all day long, you know, or, or a tournament or something like that?
Yes, sir. If they're not, and with the instructor rate, uh, you know, during the week you can block out a certain amount of courts. With them actually coming to reserve in space, we will be able to make sure that our citizens have at least two courts available or, you know, during the high, the high traffic time. So it's kind of standard of the process.
Anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Mr. Schwan's made two recommendations to your ones on metal detector guidelines. What is the feeling of council at this point in time? Concurrents? Second item is the athletic facility rental fee. We have a recommendation on tennis facilities and also Creekwood Park's football. Do you have a concurrent on both of them? Item four is other business supplemental agenda. Item four A is the Office of the City Attorney. Four A one is a discussion of Westwood Mobile Home Park paving requirements. Ms. Nick?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council, this is to follow up on, and that is to be from September twenty fifth, relevant to Westwood Mobile Home Park and their current paving requirements and how, um, council wishes to be forward relative to addressing the issues that the fire department they have. As to paving, as well as any stricter compliance, um, do you think they wish to see relative to the judgment enforcement agreement?
Ms. Gilmore, you have a recommendation on this, item four A forward.
Uh, yes. The manager's recommendation to you would be that Westwood Trailer Park developer needs to follow the requirements of the original P U D. That's what was approved by the planning commission. That was the basis for all council's action all through the history with Westwood. And we feel that that would be the correct, uh, item to do, especially since this is not a new development, but just fixing up and repairing your existing development.
Councilmember's questions, brother, do you have a recommendation?
I just have a question for Mayor. Um, in the letter, and I, like I remember last time, we talked about this, um, there was this hundred dollar penalty or being added. We've not waived that, we get the big one in there, we thought it was money that we didn't have to pay, it was just, that was a penalty, so to speak, for this, uh, first developer, correct?
Yes, sir. And that penalty continues to improve, um, until such time as all of the requirements on the exhibit fee are satisfied by the current developer? At which point the city would execute a cancellation or satisfaction for that judgment.
And, and was it a percentage of the hundred dollars or was it a total hundred dollars due to the fact of the road being? Or were there other things involved with the money that I was saying?
I don't think, I think that's just a fine that was assessed as part of the, um, the judgment that was obtained in two thousand and sixteen. Uh, I don't think that there was any, um, allocation of the percentage of that.
So there were multiple infractions or penalties by this old developer or original developer? No, it's not worth looking at, my, my question is.
The, um, judgment that is included as an attachment, um, to the minimum that was in its, the Lawrence Real Estate Properties LLC, um, basically cap or outlines what the, some of the, um.
Well, I think we're talking about first rule, first rule.
Uh, Dr. Palmerton, in answer to your question, there were a number of items there, but it was not just the street. Councilmembers may remember there was an issue by stormwater. You know, with the open hole there, there is also the question of putting in paving pads. Uh, in other words, all the items from the P U D, that applied to every single one of them.
I thought it was a hundred, a hundred percent of the money was for the width of the street not being repaved, but there were other things.
Councilmember's question?
Also they could muck the road a lot.
Well, I think the agreement that we had with them was twenty-two feet. And so that, as we negotiated with them, I don't think there was ever any question that it would be whatever the P U D had in it, which would be the twenty-two feet. Is that right? Twenty-two or twenty?
Twenty.
And the, I, I think the difference is, as I understand it, is that now we want to hold them to the new, the younger platform, which has changed, but that was never discussed with them. That, that was never part of the ongoing discussions. But I, but I remember this, that was never discussed.
That's right.
Mayor, just to clarify, the, um, the exhibit fee of the judgment enforcement agreement to address the paving situation rather than referencing the P U D plan, it does state, um, for the paving to be in compliance with the current standards. And so that's where, that's where the issue is.
Right.
Is the developer has paved the roads in compliance with the P U D, um, which is what council originally discussed several years ago, um, at twenty feet. But only in this judgment enforcement agreement was that added, uh, as one of the requirements, um, and so it's council's discretion as to whether to just allow the twenty feet, which is in compliance with the P U D, or to require, um, paving with the, the current standards at twenty-three feet.
Ms. Gilmore, what was your remembrance of our discussion with, uh, the developer?
Twenty, twenty feet.
That, that was my opinion, is that when we were negotiating with them, that, you know, it would be whatever, they had to meet whatever the P U D said. And that was the discussion that was had with them.
If I may, Mayor, it's also important, councilmembers, to remember that these are basically private driveways. These are not city streets, there's no platte laid out for them or any of that type of stuff. It's all one parcel. So, uh, and, and that, that's why the planning commission felt that the twenty feet would be statute.
And also, Mayor, just to confirm, um, what you just stated about wanting all of the requirements of the original P U D, that's also one of the items in the exhibit fee of the judgment enforcement agreement.
So there's a little conflict there in the agreement that you signed. Other comments or concerns? You could let him, probably so, they're, they are making friends. So councilmembers, what is, what is your desire? Are we gonna move, move the requirement to twenty-three feet or we're gonna allow any of what's outlined in the P U D?
I'm, I'm fine with whatever that's stated to the current, close.
I'm sorry?
I'm fine with what's been stated to the current, uh, developer. I just thought it was, that we were told, I, I was the Romans, thinking that we had told them twenty-two or twenty-three, but they all did the number.
The twenty is fine.
I'm sorry?
The twenty is fine.
Twenty. Twenty-five, I hope you're reading. Ms. Gilmore, or have a concurrent of twenty feet?
Well, this will be coming to you on the agenda tomorrow, is you have to officially vote in essence to amend this agreement to, uh, clear up that, the problem that the mayor was talking about.
There were some really difficult negotiations in this, and our goal was to, and pave and give the parking pads, put in the water situation taken care of. And so they appear to be doing a lot of work on it from what I can tell. And that really got. And that really got cleaned up, so. Anything else on that, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Dootson? Right. Item five, this council member, Mr. McRoyce? Mr. Jones?
A couple items there. Major Phelps, relative to the Stone Gate Trail, uh, once you follow up with Mr. Hendricks, would you just mind, maybe you know the substance of that, uh, follow up? Once you, once you follow up with Mr. Hendricks, and I guess you're with his data, and you just mind, I guess maybe you know the substance of that. Uh, yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. And the second item, Mayor, I do want to thank the police department for their time. Uh, a couple weeks ago, I got to try out the virtual training system through council funding. Uh, and I am told that for someone with zero training, I did not totally embarrass myself. Uh, so I'm very proud of that. I mean, you have a perfect record. But more importantly, the, uh, the investments certainly was well worth it and educational to, I think, for anyone to understand why a police officer, I mean, face on a daily basis. Uh, and so I just think it's something I've encouraged anyone to, to go by and, and take a look at, council, uh, to see, to understand how a police officer should do. So that's all, Mayor, thank you.
It's, it's a very, very impressive piece of report, I can say. It does give you a, a real life experience, uh, staying there. I decided, watching Mr. Jones, he watches way too many police stories. Mr. Johnson?
I'm fine, thank you.
Mayor President Dean?
Yes, I have one question. I know we had talked about cutting the new entrance in the Creekwood Park, you know, are that still on the building? I see some flag and stuff out there. You know, we're gonna make it nice and put some, uh, siding on the side of the driveway so people know where that is.
Yes, sir. We're, we're going in and preparing a bid for the adjustment on, uh, Creekwood Drive. Remember we talked about that? And once that work is done, we'll come back and do the finish up landscaping with it.
I'm ready to come along for the, for the art.
Oh, my... Oh, okay. Uh, that is still in negotiations with the property owners.
Okay.
It, it is moving forward. We're, we're gonna have to convince a couple of people out there, so.
Do I need to talk about it? Don't write that down.
Maybe so.
Okay, leave it alone.
Anything else, Mayor?
No, that's all I have.
Ms. Peters?
I'm all right. Well, we discussed tomorrow, the homegrown yoga email we received.
We can discuss it now.
I, I don't know, if anybody, what, what they have.
Okay. Mr. Gilmore, you want to address that now or you want to address that to the council tomorrow?
I'm not sure I know what we're talking about.
We got a level established there from someone who participates in yoga and thinks that we do, and I think the text, a whole part of it thinks that they felt like we should be more supportive of the people who rent this facility and make it more accommodating so that people can do yoga, because we're, we've eliminated their nights and days to do it, and they're looking for us to provide other locations that they can do that.
One of you can forward me a copy, I'm not, I have not seen, so.
We talked about all of it.
Well, listen, let's put it on the three councils, let them know what's talked about.
You go get a copy.
Yeah, I'll get a copy.
I think one of our major issues was last week or whatever week, that the class was canceled Monday, Tuesday, and Saturday. I don't know if it was at the last minute or not, uh, what she received as a last minute. So, yeah, we talked about it a lot.
I think they, as I read that, that was council, you know, council met on Monday and Tuesday, and then they read it on the Art Center on Saturday. So. Out of how a cancellation notification went out, I'm like you, um, that's the first time I read it, so. There, I just borrowed the sitting here, you know? I just borrowed the sitting here, you know? Thank you.
Anything else on that?
Thank you. Item six says, well, let me go this way, uh, Mr. Gilmore? Yes, sir? Nothing else? Ms. Dootson? Item six will be department given. Mr. Keen, anything additional?
Nothing, Mr. Sir.
Mr. Worthington?
Nothing, I think.
Mr. Wood? Major Phelps, anything additional, John?
Yes, sir. Just want to thank you and Councilman Jones for, uh, coming over and talking to all the officers and reassuring them that, uh, y'all got the bag and y'all supported them in what they do and thanking them for the job they do, that they're doing. Uh, we're living in, in a world where I guess, uh, some people just don't believe that police officers should be doing the job they do. Probably, probably right with some of it, but it just made them feel so good that y'all would take their time out and be at the schedule to come over and talk to them and reassure them that, uh, they're not alone. And, and that means a lot, not only to them, but I just want to say thank you for me that y'all, thank you, thank you enough to come and do that for us.
Well, thank you for putting it together. I just felt like, given the climate that they're living in today, that they need to hear it directly from me as to what my position was, not necessarily the city's, but it's what the mayor's position is, and that we're extremely proud of what you guys do each and every day to protect us and our families. And you truly are standing between us and those folks that are out there that want to hurt us. And so we truly appreciate what you do each and every day. And it's my pleasure to have a chance to, to see each one of them. And that, that works out really good well to be able to talk to everybody, because they're typically out in their cars, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, yeah, thanks for the instructions on Mr. Jones, too.
Yeah, I took a picture.
I think you ought to be posted up on Westfield, you know.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send it to the students.
Gee?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, just a reminder that, uh, October is Fire Prevention Month, and with Tabitha's help, we did send out a notification today for our fire safety poster contest. So if you know any third graders in the Perry area, whether they're in public school, private school, or homeschool, they're eligible to join our contest and, uh, submit. So we'll be happy to start looking those over as soon as they start coming in, and we'll have something to put out later in the year.
Thank you, Gee. President Parker? Mr. Swan?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and council. Uh, I did want to announce that, uh, our department officially initiated our road to getting CAPRA accredited. Uh, CAPRA stands for the Commission for Accreditation of Parks and Recreation Agencies. It's a coalition of, of groups that come in and they, and they, you basically set your standard for your department at a national level. Because I, I think it's similar to Water First and, and all the other great accolades that our cities have. So what, we just submitted the application and we'll be working towards this. It's a two-year process. It, it can take up to two years. Uh, so we'll be working with our fellow departments to get some information in and, and hopefully we'll attain that accreditation shortly. Um, I did want to mention that, uh, we are currently at our state conference, GRPA, that we're finalists for two, two awards for programming. So we're excited. Hopefully we come back, come home with them. Keep your fingers crossed. Um, and our traffic park has been a great attraction to our destination playground, Creekwood Park. Uh, thank, thank you, Ms. Gil, um, Ms. Ms. Tabitha for her, her work, um, creating that grand opening. You did a wonderful job. Uh, thank you, Mayor and council, for allowing us, excuse me, allowing us to proceed with it. But I, I, we rarely get to thank Mr. Gilmore. I had to go and twist his arm early on last year and, uh, and, and get, and tell him it was for the kids, so he, he bought into it and he, and he's behind the scenes a lot of the times, and I really appreciate you seeing the vision and, and, and allowing us to push forward. All right, and that's, that's all I have to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dootson? Does more anything from the city clerk's office? Ms. Bryant, do you need to say anything?
Just briefly, do you need, Mayor and council? I just wanted to let everyone know downtown Perry is very proud. The Make and Telegraph Best of the Best Awards came out last week, and twenty-four of those awards, whether it was winners, runner-ups, honorable mentions, went to downtown businesses in Perry all throughout Houston County. So very proud of that, but thank you for the support of downtown Perry. That list did launch on social media, and it'll be going out in our newsletter, so if you are downtown, stop by and say congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. It was great to see that many winners and everybody that's involved. So it was county, you know, House and county by it, so we had a lot of competition, so. I think it extreme you will. Thanks for all the hard work on my end there. Ms. Parker?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Um, I just wanted to let you know that today, uh, the Downtown Development Authority of the city of Perry closed on its Spartan internal revolving loan fund program. We've had this money since two thousand and fifteen, it's never been utilized, so we were able to assist a new business downtown, Club of Wine Merchant. Um, and thank you, work as well, because she did help us with our guidelines and our applications, so that we could actually go through our first application, and then we do expect to review another one here in the near future.
Thank you. Glad to hear that. I think that's everybody. There's nobody sitting behind the podium over on the left, if not. I just remind everybody, we will have three council here tomorrow evening at five o'clock. I also have our official council meeting at six tomorrow evening. We will have a executive session after that tomorrow evening, so I ask everybody to come prepared to participate in that. If there's nothing else to come before us, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Who would like it? Motion, this is a common favorite, it's right in. As we can use the jury.